Great, so let's kick this off. Hello everyone and welcome back to one of the two cases that we're hosting at the forum today. This session provides an opportunity to dive a little deeper and get a sense of how one company is understanding and solving problems. I'd like to extend a very warm welcome to Louis Montau and Yassine, who has actively encouraged me to pronounce his surname, but I'm going to give it a shot anyway. Oh, I'll say it. Louis is the CEO of Royal Canin, a multinational company with the purpose of improving the health of every dog and cat, and also a multi-billion dollar brand that has been growing double digit for more than a decade. Yassine is a Senior Director for Operations and Capabilities at Economics of Mutuality Solutions, the strategy and design consultancy behind the management toolkit that you'll see illustrated in this session and also behind much of the forum. Before I hand over to them, my name is Laura, I'm your host for this case, and we'll be using roughly the first half hour to hear from Louis and Yassine and see a presentation from them. And then the second half, they'll be taking questions from you. So please use the Q&amp;A function to send your questions our way. Let's get started. Louis, over to you.
Thank you Laura, it's a pleasure to be back. Actually, I had the honour of giving a lecture two years ago really around what does it mean and why Royal Canin is interested in economics of mutuality? And I'm very pleased that we will be showing some of the progress we've made with the help of Yassine in the last two years. So as you can see, the most important character on this picture when you work at Royal Canin is actually my dog, a female boxer Coco, very lively. Everything we do at Royal Canin is for cats and dogs and for their health. This is really our purpose and this is what motivates and drives us. If we move on the next slide, really what the reason why we are embracing EOM is because it's a management innovation in fact. And it enables us to look at the business in a different way and to start our initiative, our activities, our measurement of performance, but as well our innovations with a different prism than, and a more holistic and I would argue actually a very modern prism. So what is the role of the firm and what we should be doing? And if you, you know, according to the EOM philosophy, the role of the firm is to solve meaningful challenges profitably. And why is that important? Well, basically you design your activity and your contribution as a company of why you are existing by picking up a challenge you're solving for people or for the planet. And you need to do that in an efficient way. And that's really the performance aspect is the effectiveness of your resolution. And obviously, the profitability is what makes you sustainable as an enterprise over time. Your business needs profit to succeed, and if they are profitable, they can actually do really good overall and contribute to society. So if we move to the next, the foundation of economics of mutuality is really threefold. One is to define what's your purpose? Why do you exist as an enterprise? And I would argue this can be valid for a nonprofit organization or any other institution in fact, but in this case, we apply it in business. What is a unique contribution that as a company you're actually bringing? And defining your purpose requires to de-center yourself as an organization. Your purpose cannot be just to grow yourself bigger. Your purpose is really, what is the contribution you're bringing to all the stakeholders around you? And how do you create value in a holistic way? Not just in a financial way, but in a holistic way. And very successful businesses create values in multiple ways today. You know, some by organizing knowledge, some by creating networks, and some by making products or producing services. But the important thing is to define the why and why you're here. And I will give the example of Mars and Royal Canin in a minute. The second step is really, once you've defined your purpose, to map your ecosystems in which you operate. What are the stakeholders that we work with? How they are interacting with each other? What's the quality of their relationship? And what are their pain points? What are the vulnerabilities is in the ecosystem? And to use that as a way to drive some of your initiatives, some of your innovation, some of the contribution you need to make. And of course, the third pillar is managing and measuring multiple forms of capital. And why this is critical is because looking at your business with all the stakeholders in mind and the different forms of capital will actually make the business more resilient over time because you will share more value and enrich the contribution. And so we see that really happening in difficult times. Businesses that are, it's all adage that you need to make friends before you need them. But it's really the same thing in business is you build, your business is only as strong as your entire value chain and all the partners in the value chain. So how do you measure the health of your business model? Is by really looking at the fourth form of capital. Social capital is about relationship. Human capital is really about knowledge. Natural capital are the resources we consume and of course, the financial capital, we know that very well, is what fuels overall the engine. When you look in today's world, value is not only created by making products. Some entire business model are built around social capital. Facebook, WhatsApp, Instagram, all these networks are all about relationship. And this is, and they create massive value, their market capitalization is absolutely huge. Some companies are building their business model totally on human capital. I would argue that, you know, Google as an example, decided to organize the knowledge of the world. Wikipedia is on the nonprofit side, another example, but there are entire business models that are around human capital. Maybe less around, you know, entire business design or natural capital, but it's emerging as well. You have entire companies today that try to provide solutions to improve the consumption, the replenishment of natural resources around the world. So it's really, and the more you look at building your business around those four forms consciously, the more powerful, the more sustainable, the more long-term successful will be the business model. At least that's our hypothesis and our assumption. If we move to the next slide, the real question is how do we get there? And this is really a basic five-step approach. It's very practical, it's not a magic formula or recipe, and it's an offer we are making you, this is what we are using today in Royal Canin with the help of Yassine and the EOM team that we have developed. First, you choose a meaningful challenge as a purpose. Second, you map your ecosystem. Third, you decide what are the pain points in your ecosystem you want to solve. And fourth, you create those interventions and measure their impact. And that's the most important, measure the effectiveness. And finally, which is probably the biggest issue today we have is how do we develop a set of metrics that are non-financial to really validate the overall approach and to be able to steer it going forward, i.e. to make meaningful decisions on a day-to-day basis or on an annual basis or midterm basis. On the next slide, I will illustrate an example for each of them. So a meaningful challenge, in the case of Royal Canin, our meaningful challenge is we want to improve the health of every cat and dog. Now, why we do that? We do that because we have a view and a belief that nobody has a pet just to feed them, they have a pet because it adds value in their life. It creates a benefit to them and therefore, our overarching purpose is to make a better world for pets. In wanting to make a better world for pets, we try to define our unique contribution. And our unique contribution being a nutrition company, we actually make pet food, but nutrition solution for cats and dogs through professionals. We want to improve the health outcome of a cat and a dog. We believe that nutrition can change the physiological condition of a cat and a dog and make them live longer and better. So we define our unique contribution and that's our meaningful challenge. On the next slide. Then, once we've defined that, we're basically looking at mapping the entire ecosystem around us. And this is where we've done that with Yassine and his team through really qualitative and quantitative research. We basically looked at all the stakeholders around the pet and the pet owner. And so the minute you, what is the journey of a cat owner or a dog owner? With whom do they interact in their ecosystem? And what you see here is a cartography, a total map. And the little cube you see with different colors around each of the stakeholder are defined for the four capitals, so each color is a different capital. And in doing that, we try to identify the vulnerabilities, the pain points, the tensions in the ecosystem between the players or for the players. And based on that, it gives you an information on how you can create a healthier ecosystem around you, which will make everybody benefit. So what are the interventions that you want to take on? And taking a very concrete example. So in our case, if our overall challenge is to promote health, mapping the ecosystem, the challenge and the opportunities are to improve the physiological outcome for the cats and for the dogs and how we can do that. And basically, what is the social, economical and cultural challenges that all the pet professionals or the stakeholders around are faced with? And mapping those two dimensions gives us basically a source of insight that we can act on and we can define innovation in business model or in product, or we can even design activities that will make the ecosystem healthier overall. On the next slide. So I will give very concrete example in order to, for everybody to understand the mechanic. The vulnerabilities, for example, we identified, free example here, puppy and kitten. Just I give you one data point. Puppy and kitten are the most fragile, of course, animals in the world and many of them are being fed, you know, adult food straight on, which is one issue. But the other issue is, in the case of puppies, for example, one in five do not survive past two weeks. In one puppy litter, basically 20% of them will die. And so at Royal Canin, we say, okay, this is something that we can do something about. And if we, and why it's important? Because obviously, the breeder feels bad about this. Emotionally, it's a drag, it's a drain. But it's as well not good for his financial capital because he cannot sell those puppies. So there is an emotional dimension to that, which is the social really relationship of breeders with their community of stakeholders, but there is as well a financial capital element to it. And the point is, we can do something about that. So we designed an intervention and we spent five years with the Vet University of Toulouse to design, to study it, and basically to design a milk replacement product. Because the reason why those puppies die is because they are not strong enough to access the beach milk. So we designed a substitute product, but we went much beyond that. We helped the breeders to define mortality diagnostics so they can identify the weakest puppy by basically observation, making sure they identify them early and they can save them. Now, in doing that, we end up increasing the survival rate, which in turn is a great reward for the breeder and of course, improve their financial capital. Now, the point I've made before is, this product is super niche and obviously, we don't, we're not really making a return on this because the target group is very narrow. But what we have done is we created a totally new set of knowledge, i.e. human capital, in a neonatology field. So by tackling this challenge, we work with professionals to create the knowledge. That knowledge enables us to create a product and services that enables a breeder to remove a big pain point and by doing that, we increase the health of the ecosystem. Obviously, being a positive player into this world, we would expect as well to have a positive reputational benefit with breeders around the world and they might recommend Royal Canin as a brand, hopefully. So, you know, this is not done for free, but the side benefit comes way after we've done the work. If we look at the second example I have, which is really puppy and kitten, it's another striking number. More than half of cat owners basically don't really take their cat to the vet because they don't think it's necessary. Why do we think it's an issue? Cat is a very modern animal with urbanization. There is a rise of cat ownership around the world. The easier animal to live with in a city, they can stay alone for a while, more than dogs. They're very independent, but in a way, they have two issues. Is cats can't speak, they hide their pain. It's very, very difficult to understand whether they are well or not. And of course, they are extreme for anybody who tried to bring a cat somewhere. It's very, very hard to put them in a crate so that you can actually transport them to a veterinary clinic. And when you arrive at the clinic, they are dogs. So the cat feels super stressed and it smells dog in the consultation room and so they are very hard to handle for veterinarians. So basically, we realized we needed to do something about this because cats are less cat fur than dog in a major way. It's a rising population and the experience for cat owner is terrible. And so, remember, we are only doing kibble, we're doing pet food, but we decided to take on this challenge and say, we can do something about that. And we investigating, you know, with pet owners, with veterinarians, how to change this paradigm? And we designed an activity called Take Your Cat To The Vet, where we basically train veterinarians and vet technicians how to prepare their clinic to welcome cats, how to talk to the cat owner on how to help them prepare for the trip. And at the same time, we run an entire campaign publicly to create awareness for the cat owner that they need to do that and if they do that, they will have a better experience with their cat over time. They will be able to prevent issues to happen and occur going forward. And we share with them the tips on as well how to organize for this trip. This campaign has started in one country, is now in 35, this is the fourth year we're doing it. Why is it good? It's good because the health outcome for the cat is very positive, they are better cared for. And we are establishing a relationship between cat owners and veterinarians that do not exist very well today, or actually is not large enough. We created human capital by, you know, studying how to improve that experience. And we trained vet technicians, veterinary clinics and pet owners in doing this. And obviously, it will create a positive financial capital for veterinarians because they will see more patients and hopefully, they will recommend us with Royal Canin food. So we are hoping to have, of course, a financial capital outcome for us as well. It's just an example that, yes, we are a business, but when you look at your business in its entirety, you come up with a very different way of designing your activation and your initiatives and sometimes your innovation. And my last example is really an innovation for veterinarians. Veterinarians, you know, Yassine has actually helped us understand that because of the rise of e-commerce, actually, we are tapping into the reputation of veterinarians that recommend our product, but they are being challenged because some of these products are being sold online cheaper. And what happens is veterinarians don't want to be seen as salesmen, they are doctors and they don't want to be criticized or challenged because somehow, somebody is selling the same thing cheaper. So we are, in a way, we are deteriorating their social capital due to a competitive change of landscape. And what we did was, in an innovation, we wanted to bring to market for a long time, which is a multi-pathology nutrition solution. We decided to design the business model in a way that we give back to the veterinarian their role as a doctor. And so we totally changed the way this innovation is working, where the product doesn't exist before the diagnostic is made. So the veterinarians make the diagnostic, collect the data, and based on that diagnostic, we are running an artificial intelligent algorithm that basically proposes the best nutrition solution. And if the owner agrees, we will then make the product on demand. Which, that product doesn't exist on the market, you can't find it anywhere, it has to go through the veterinarian and it's totally based on the diagnostic of the veterinarians, which, you know, really rebuild their reputation and their credibility and we are merely the provider of the nutrition solution in this case. So we are de-centering ourselves on this ecosystem. Royal Canin individualism has been introduced in France, Germany and now in Japan. And it's really interesting to look at, we have designed that in a way to really solve the problem that occurred to veterinarians, which is, they want to be doctors. And so how do we make them doctors in a center of the nutritional response they need to give to pet owners? So these are really my free examples of how you can design an innovation, an activity or an entire new business model because you follow this approach of choosing a meaningful challenge, mapping your stakeholders, identifying the tension points and really trying to design intervention that improve the health of the ecosystem around you. And to complete this, of course, is, are we effective in doing that? How do we measure that we are successful? How do we anticipate whether we invest enough in social capital, in human capital for the health of our business model overall? And on that, I will leave Yassine taking you through our progress in the last two years.
So hello everyone and thanks Louis for the great introduction. So as we come to the step where we want to be able to measure and track performance against these, you know, I would say more holistic approaches to business modeling. Our inspiration was from the approach that the OECD has proposed a decade ago about how to measure impact. And this actually extends not only to companies, but also to NGOs, government, any kind of of organization who wants to have a systemic impact should try to look at what they do through this kind of matrix that we usually call theory of change, right? So you have a certain purpose or impact in mind, like for example, providing access to education to villages in rural India, right? And in order to do that, you say, okay, I'm going to build a school. Okay, so you're going to mobilize some resources and those resources can be of the four capitals, you know, money for financial capital, people for human capital, relationship with local authorities, for example, for social capital. And you're going to, you know, buy or rent the land, get the authorization, build the school. Now, this activity has what we call an output. The output is just the tangible product of that activity. So for building a school, for example, it could be the number of seats that you're offering to children in that village in India, okay? Now, if only eight students come to your school, then from the perspective of the village, so of the outside target, actually, the outcome is only eight students. So if I'm, you kind of start to see here the difference in metrics between the typical business metrics who are based on outputs. So if I'm a business, I usually will measure, you know, advertising reach, I will measure units sold, etc. And those are outputs of my activities. Now, if I want to understand my impact on the ecosystem, I need to understand outcomes. And in this case, that's the difference between offering 32 seats and having eight students attend, right? So we can get a bit more sophisticated by looking at, you know, counterfactuals and how does it do against the control group, etc. And that's kind of the subtle differences between outcomes and impacts. So for example, if you already had a program running in that village by the government that gave access to six of the eight students, you know, to education, then maybe your impact is only two, your incremental impact. But let's set that aside for now and focus on the difference between what people call outputs and what they call outcomes. So again, let's say you're, you want to limit the propagation of infectious disease. And this example was created way before we were talking about COVID-19. So let's say you build a soap factory and you create a huge campaign on hand washing. Your outputs will be how much your campaign reached and how much you sold. But your outcome will be with percentage of people change their behavior, okay? So are they washing their hands more often, etc.? Okay, so I just want to kind of introduce this aspect because it's going to be really important. So when you try to implement this type of approach within a business like Royal Canin, you get into this, okay? What we're saying is that whatever your activities, you're going to mobilize people, money, relationships and natural resources. Okay, you're going to have a certain number of activities, which in the case of Royal Canin will have some kind of reach when we're talking about campaigns, you know, a number of users when we're talking about online platforms, a number of pet feds and sales when we're talking about, you know, the, just the output of the food production business, okay? But as outcomes, you know, the way that Royal Canin sees themselves creating an impact on pet health is through improving the well-being and the nutrition knowledge of professionals, like specialized stores, breeders, shelters, veterinarians. Okay, there is also another outcome. So again, it's talking, taking outcomes from the perspective of the outside world, okay, of the ecosystem. Another outcome is the economic performance of these people. So specifically, for example, the breeders, only 17% of them are able to make a living between breeding, okay? And specialized stores are massively challenged by both modern trade like supermarkets, but also online, right? Veterinarians themselves are not necessarily in a very rosy financial situation depending on the market and the context. So them being able to have a sustainable economic model is also something that Royal Canin is contributing to and seeing as one of their key outcome objectives, all right? Last but absolutely not least, this whole thing only works if there is a solid trust between pet owners and veterinarians or pet owners and professionals and also between pet professionals and Royal Canin. So those basically are three types of outcome and we mentioned, human, social and financial capital, that if we manage to address them, add that to the quality and product innovation coming out of Royal Canin on their supply side, then combining these, the product design and the product innovation on one hand. And specific interventions aim at addressing these socio-economic and cultural barriers to pet health. We then are able to have an impact on pet health as could be measured with metrics like healthy life expectancy at birth, you know, or prevalence of certain diseases, etc., okay? And this is basically a broad perspective of how we put in place a theory of change within a company. And basically, the sustainability and own economic performance of the company itself is actually in the output section because of course, the sales of the company are outputs, okay? So it's not neglected, it's actually part of the thing that we need to be able to deliver. And this is how it looks like, you know, for a specific intervention, okay? We start with a bunch of tensions or pain points within the ecosystem. In this case, we're talking about the sustainability of the breeder profession, okay? So here, we have typically three big pain points. One that is human capital, their professional well-being is really low. The trust between them and adopters is quite low too, that's social capital and their financial viability is very fragile, that's financial capital. And Royal Canin decided to create basically this breeding management system accompanied with a quality certification and adoption platform. All of these digital platforms and training programs are designed by RC are aimed at these three pain points, but have their own metrics, right? So for example, the percentage of breeders recommending their jobs is very low and that's a good way of keeping track of the professional well-being. Same thing about the percentage of pet owners who actively recommend to not go to a breeder and that's very high, at 60%, as well as the famous 17% of breeders who can make a living. So those aspects here are all very simple, straightforward ways to measure non-financial performance or sometimes even financial performance in key tension points within the ecosystem. And of course, the lagging metrics would be the purpose metrics, which is for the pet health metrics, but also the economic performance of Royal Canin. And this is how basically we reconcile this idea of the firms being there to solve meaningful challenges profitably. The meaningful challenge is the purpose metric. Profitably, that's going to be our sustainability metrics. But that meaningful challenge is then going to be broken down into key elements we want to improve within the ecosystem and those are what we're going to call the outcomes, okay? So those leading metrics on these slides, you know, are the outcomes. You may then ask, but you know, how do we relate those outcomes? If I improve the situation of the breeders or the vets or the pet owners, you know, am I reaping a benefit too? Like, am I able to actually deliver these outcomes in a profitable way? Well, these are some early results from a recent study we've done in countries who had high growth for RC over the last 10 years versus on the right-hand side, some lower growth countries, again, for Royal Canin over the last 10 years. And what you can see is that if I look at the veterinarians' data that we collected through this recent study in 2019 and 20, in high-growth countries, vets would recommend their jobs much more than, this is a 1-2-10 scale than they would in low-growth countries. That's a very similar situation for satisfaction with income, so shared financial capital. Satisfaction with admin workload is much higher in high-growth countries than in low-growth countries. So we're talking about veterinarians, these are external stakeholders. Last but not least, the relationships with the suppliers through the sales food rep is also much better and the satisfaction is much higher with that relationship in high-growth countries. in high-growth countries versus low-growth countries. So we quickly can see that there is a direct link between those elements of human, social and shared financial capital and the economic performance of the firm. So essentially what we're describing here is what might well be a superior economic model just through a better, better taking into account the whole ecosystem, you know, using purpose as kind of basis of strategy, basis for strategy, and measuring the outcomes in a way that while still being simple, actually still addresses the key tensions in that ecosystem. Right? So those were, this is our presentation. So I think we reached now the phase where we're ready to answer any questions you guys may have.
Great. Thank you so much, Louis and Yassin. I loved the way Louis, you, you drew out this axiom, make friends before you need them, and then illustrated that so elegantly with the research about neonatal deaths in puppies and kind of equipping the rest of the ecosystem with that information and also the Take Your Cat to the Vet initiative. That was, that was great to hear. And thank you also, Yassin, for bringing us back to measurement, the theme of today. So I'm just looking out for questions coming in. Please feel free to send them over. But while we, while we look out for those, I wanted to come back to the fact that obviously Royal Canin works in many countries. And I can imagine that challenges and pain points for vets in, in different countries vary hugely and the ecosystems can be entirely different. So how does the, how does the mapping system, how does the mapping change? And how do you address regional differences in, in the process that you follow?
Thank you, Laura. Well, it's, you're absolutely right. And, and that's why it's, we decided to use ecosystem mapping actually at the, at the country level. So we, we have done it, I think in, and Yassin, you will tell me if I'm wrong, six countries so far.
Yes.
Around the world. So we, we had to be choiceful on which country we, we are doing that. But we, we did it in a way that is quite constructed, if you want. So we, we took emerging markets, we took a very mature market, markets where we're doing very well, and we took markets where we're not doing so well, so that we can understand the difference and illustrate as well and build our own conviction on that. Because for example, the, in my organization, the easiest thing to do for a general manager is to de-invest in, in the human and social capital with breeders or with veterinarians. Because this is a, this is an investment over the mid and long term. This, this doesn't allow you to make your quarterly numbers or yearly numbers. And so if they are under pressure, this is probably, this could be the first thing they cut. And I have no way to see it as a, as a, as a president of the company, in fact. I get all sorts of financial reports, but I don't have a report on the quality of the social capital in that country. And that's why for us it was important to do that. So we've been discerning, I would say, in mapping the ecosystem in six countries that are in very different stages of development, either for us or as an industry. And in order to build our own expertise and knowledge about that. Some themes are totally transversal, like the cat component is totally transversal because it's linked to the species and not to the profession itself. Some themes will be totally local. So shelters, for example, are very well handled in some countries. And you know, Germany is a good example where you have very good quality shelters, well-funded, very different issues than in other countries where it is actually pretty bad overall. So that, that would be the answer. So some, we can design some initiatives globally and then some of them have to be actually very local within a.
And you were saying, you were seeing on your screen the French ecosystem. I can also share with you, show you an example of the Chinese one, which we'll see, you will see. Although it bears some resemblance at first sight, I don't know if you still see my screen, by the way. Oh yes, I would reshare my screen, no problem. Let's do that. So the examples you saw in the presentations were from the French ecosystem app. This, this one is the one from Poland and this last one is one from China. Okay, as you can see, there are many more profiles of vets, because there are two vets. It's a much more heterogeneous population in China. And in China, you also have some, the, the, the role that law enforcement and, and that, you know, local authorities play can also be larger. And the relationships within this ecosystem are a bit different, starting with the fact that in some markets, you also have some cultural aspects to, to pet ownership. Like for example, dogs can be considered as being overall relatively dangerous and dirty. And therefore, there is a very strong social stigma that are faced by vets and nurses and other pet professionals who work with dogs, who can actually suffer some personal and social costs linked to working in that area. So I completely agree, there are sometimes some very different circumstances. I would say that one constant thing is that people find the vet to be expensive. No surprise there. And this is actually a key breakdown in the pet ecosystem, the funding of healthcare, the discrepancy between the expectations of healthcare and the funding of healthcare. That's quite common across all markets that we've looked at. But yes, we do see some key differences also between markets.
It's really interesting to see and, and make sense that with that information, you are then equipped to, to work out how to, what to deliver to best respond to your purpose. And I'd like to take a question now from Steve Griffiths. Thank you, Steve. He'd like to know if there's anything unique about how Royal Canin have set yourselves up internally that allow you to behave like this and support the entire ecosystem?
So, yes and no. So it's not perfect, but we, we have an organization by stakeholder with support. So for example, I have a vertical organization really dedicated to support veterinarians. And another one vertically dedicated to support what we call pet professionals, such as breeders, mergers, shelters. You know, and then another one which is around really the customers and so on, which enables us to sort of start from their, their pain points and their requests. So it's true that it is, we are now, basically because we have ecosystem mapping, the person in charge of the strategy development starts with the pain point of those stakeholders and walk back their strategy to build on what we call an outcome-based strategy. And from that, they look at the input that we need to bring in, in the design of those activities. Next to purpose-driven ecosystem mapping and measurement, we, we have now another tool which is outcome-based strategy, you know, which are really designed to resolve a pain point. Now, measuring the effectiveness of that resolution is, is, is a challenge because very often the impact is over years. So if your design of your intervention that is meant to resolve the pain point doesn't work, you know, it will take you time to, to resolve that. But, so yes, I think in a way, we have an organizational setup that enables us to really pinpoint of some of the stakeholders in our ecosystem, not all of them, but some of them. And there is accountability in the organization for that.
Great. And, and in terms of the, this organization, these, these pillars that you have, is that something that Royal Canin has always had or is that something that's changed over time?
So it has evolved over time and we started to move this way around 2010 and become really, really strict about that organizational model about five years ago. And we are, we keep reinforcing this really strongly. Where, where basically we, we look at, you know, addressing, if you want. So the, the organizational makeup of the organization is probably 10 years old, but thinking is, is very recent, is two, three years. And with the work of Yassin that we, our challenge was, at least my realization of Royal Canin is in a way, we were a little bit like Obelix. Somehow we were doing some of EOM without knowing it, but we got our finger on it. And now we are kind of really creating the concept. So it's not just an institutional knowledge, it's something that we can, we can articulate conceptually and we can develop methods and tools for it. The risk we, we had is in some places, we were doing it very well. And in others, we were not doing it very well at all. And because we didn't have metrics and we didn't have tools. So that's, that's the change in the last, yeah, three to five years.
Really interesting to hear. Did you have anything to add to that, Yassin?
I mean, I, I think what, what we're describing here maybe links to one of the questions that's being asked, which is, you know, how does this, like, we're supporting the external ecosystem through this approach. How is that support kind of a sustainable kind of systemic resource for maybe other innovators who may want to introduce, to, to bring their own solutions? I think this, this is, I think this is a very good question. And at the same time, it takes us, it takes us back to, there is a step in that, that's five steps, that is choose the problems you want to solve. Okay, the ecosystem is the same for everyone, but different people might choose to solve different problems. Okay, so the main thing we've been doing, I think, on the diagnostic side is to basically share this type of map with other players who are interested in it, okay, in the ecosystem. But at the same time, when you see that Royal Canin invested five years in neonatology research, that's public peer-reviewed research, you know, published in the journals that are academic journals. So in the sense, a lot of the investments that Royal Canin is doing, since they are aiming at changing outcomes in the ecosystem, they are inherently supporting the ecosystem. Okay?
Right, that makes sense. And I think that, that answers David's question around the fact that Royal Canin is obviously not the only problem solver or innovator in this system. And he's interested in understanding how you work with kind of ecosystem-wide or distributed change-making.
I've just, I've just answered that question by, by, so I can go. In, in some cases, we do work with veterinarians or kennel clubs, for example, to really address some, some overall industry challenges and we're part of it. And in other, in other cases, we have examples where we, we work with the regulators and including our, just to really establish kind of norms in nutrition or in, in the pet ownership quality, especially in emerging markets, which is, which is really an effort to, to make sure pets are treated well. We are currently collaborating a total mass pet care label to create, for example, a pet homelessness index, which is really to measure pet abandonment and, and how we resolve that. It's, it's a totally industry-wide initiative to, to basically eradicate pet homelessness. And we, we are trying to work out a definition for that and making sure that there is no unwanted pet that are in inappropriate places and uncared for. And so this is, so you know, we have very good examples of doing that with others and, and participating. Obviously, we're not covering all of the pain points and, you know, we can only chew what we can one at a time, but, but there is a real, real appetite to, to, to do this collaboratively when we can. In some, in, in our case, in some cases, we partner with diagnostic firms to understand better the issues that veterinarians in some pathology cannot detect. And we work with them to develop that, all, all sorts of small examples in, in, in collaborating for, for resolving pain points.
To hear. And I'd like to move back towards the measurement, the measurement kind of question around a, a lot of what you described in the presentation was at a, a country or a market level. So quite macro. But if we, if we're looking at something that goes down to down to a more specific level at, at the level of teams, how does, how does that work? And how do they, how do they fit together?
Yeah, so this is a, this is a huge challenge, in fact. And I will know, I will not say that we are, we are perfect at this point. But we, we start to, so the metrics that Yassin, for example, has shown for breeders starts to diffuse down the organization and they need to translate that and take the outcome, we look back into an input. And then we, what we tend to do is to short-term measure how, where we are doing on the input, we believe that will have an impact on the outcome. Because we cannot measure the outcome at a high frequency level. And so we, we will put a lot of effort to design intervention properly, try to validate that, that intervention has a positive outcome. And then we will incentivize our team on the input measure, really. So are you running a Take Your Cat to the Vet activity? So now that we validated that Take Your Cat to the Vet works, are you guys doing it? Is the quality, you're doing it well? Have you embarked with veterinarians in your market? So we will not measure the outcome immediately, because we'll only see that in three years. But we will measure the quality of the, of the input intervention, if you want. And examples of how it cascades in factories, when you want to impact health, obviously, your products have to be at a level of quality and food safety that is a totally different level than when you're not. So, you know, you, you're concretely measuring people differently. It's not just the number of tons you can make, it's really the, the quality of that product, that product needs to work. And it needs to be safe, so that the, you have to change the metric. Otherwise, people respond to the, to the metric that they are measured on. I mean, it's, it's, it's very clear. So it's a journey and, and I think it requires a lot of intelligence, in, in collective intelligence to design those metrics at every level in the organization.
Right. And from the very, very bottom, kind of in factory level to the, beyond just countries and markets, to the whole firm, are there any metrics that you, that you take to, to that level and, and consider and track?
So that's not yet. And here I have a lot of hope that with digital technology and digital platform, we will start to get aggregated data cross-country, for example. So for example, we created a platform to help breeders and, and with services. And, you know, they, they, they register their puppy liters on it. And so we can see how many of the puppy liters have, of the, of the puppies have, have made it. And we can see how many of them have been adopted. So we can, we, we suddenly, you know, when breeders agree to be on the platform, they get access to a lot of services from us, but that helps us as well to really measure whether we are making a difference or not, which is very difficult to do in the physical world. But with digital technology, it's becoming easier. So this is one way that we are looking at in order to, to basically get aggregated data backup. The only measurement I have that is a non-financial, that is on that level today is on puppy kitten recruitment around the world for, for Royal Canin and how many we have helped being adopted. So, but we, so we, we need, we need to develop much, much more the goal of, of, of metrics. And I'm hopeful that, as I said, with platform and digital technology, we can.
So I, I wanted also to bring up the fact that the challenge of aggregate metrics is not only a technical challenge. There is a strategic challenge linked to that too, which is that the key breakdown or the key problem in some countries might not be the same. Remember when we said that we were having a map in China and a map in France and a map in Sweden and the map in Thailand, whatever. Okay. That means that we may want to actually prioritize some key outcomes in the ecosystem that might be, have a different level of priority for the US ecosystem versus the Thailand one. And as a consequence, aggregating some metrics might be meaningless at some point. And like the, if we want to be true to the purpose, the purpose needs to be translated into what you might call local meaning. Right? So that people understand why they're doing things. Okay. So again, when we try to aggregate these metrics in, in, across different markets, there is this challenge of being able to aggregate metrics and still be meaningful in what we're measuring and how we're treating them. So in, in a sense, there might be, like, the purpose metric itself, for example, the healthy, the, the healthy life expectancy at birth can be something that absolutely can be done everywhere. Like, or some aspect of homelessness index can potentially be deployed everywhere. We, we still need to provide some flexibility to different types of markets or different types of regions to be able to contract with the global leadership. To say, here are the key issues we're fixing. So maybe we don't aggregate exactly the same metrics everywhere, but at least there is a meaningful way of cascading the purpose.
Yeah, that's a really interesting point. Metrics for metric sake doesn't really make sense. They've got to, they've got to mean something and, and inform what you're doing. So thanks for that addition, Yassin. And another question leading on about measurement. Obviously, there, there are, there's a case for the positive impact that pets have on their owners. Has there ever been a consideration of measuring human, the human health impact? Or is that one step too far?
So it's not totally a step too far. And actually, some of our teams at some point had a vision that one day we will be, you know, somehow recognized as beneficial for social security system and things like that. Because we know that pet ownership is actually really, has an impact on, on people's wellbeing. And when, when there are pets at home, that, you know, it's, it's just generally better for the wellbeing and the health of the family. They have more active, they have more interaction, kids get less sick. There's all sorts of benefits, and, and some of it has been totally scientifically proven with release of hormone, both in the human and in the pet when there is an interaction. So, so the, the point is, we have those evidence from a scientific study point of view, but we don't have them again on a regular, ongoing aggregate basis. So we, 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 you know, so it's, it is a stretch too far in the sense that it is not systematized today. And you cannot make a case that, okay, this family didn't have a pet, and then now they have a pet, and so take a pet and your life will get better. You know, this, this is a shortcut. But we know that on an ongoing basis, you know, the, the, the evidences of the positive role of pets in society is overwhelming. And the question is how to, to concretely measure that. The other element, which is a counterbalance of that, is the responsible pet ownership. One of the issue with pet ownership is pet owners believe they, they understand their pet, and in fact, they don't, because cats and dogs don't speak. And as I said, they hide their pain, they, and pet owners very often project, so they have an anthropomorphic picture, if you want, of, of their animal, which is not totally the right one. And, and there is a real challenge in making sure that there is a responsible pet ownership out there. And so we are working on both, actually. We're really having very active promoting activities in, at mass pet carable and responsible pet ownership, and of course, on promoting the, the, the benefit of pet in society. But we're not at a level where we can measure those intervention on an ongoing systemic basis. It's more an intervention model.
Great. And a question from Alfred. He's interested in the robustness and the way you review your indicators. Has there been a time when you've had to completely rebuild or change an indicator in the midst of a project? And how did you manage that, if so?
Okay, maybe this one, yeah, I can, I can take a stab at it. Essentially, if you want to define what a metric is, and I'm sorry for getting a little bit academic here, a metric basically is a number that allows you to tell a difference between elements of a set, right? A metric measures the distance, not something absolute, but how different things are. So the way that these metrics are designed is that they start with fairly large, kind of based on academic literature type of measurements of wellbeing and relationships and trust and satisfaction. Okay, so those are human and social capital questionnaires has been created a long time ago. And we basically adapted them and run them in multiple areas to basically try to figure out what are the key dimensions, the key variables that are able to tell us differences, okay, where there is variance across variable that are actually actionable, because they're not the same for everyone. Now, if everyone answers the same thing, usually that means that it's not a really very useful metric, okay? So to have information, you need variance. So the analysis of that variance, the, the, the idea is basically to find the dimensions that best explain that variance. And those dimensions then are explained by key variables. So those variables are not chosen randomly. They're chosen because they describe the axis of variance in, in the dataset. Okay, so, sorry, I'm getting a little bit technical here, but the question, I think, warrants it. And so from that perspective, that's actually fairly robust way from questionnaire to questionnaire, because the, the, the dimensions that where people don't agree, those dimensions don't change a lot across time. So we find a relatively stable, basically, dimensions of variance that we can reuse. That being said, what is, what is absolutely true is that sometimes you have multiple questions that, that in the questionnaire, that, that can explain a different, a specific dimension. And then there was, there is a choice to be made. It's almost like a, kind of a business choice, like what question am I going to be to ask in my future questionnaires to represent that dimension? Okay, so, so there, there, there is always a certain level of flexibility into how you keep track of, of these metrics through time. But at the heart of it, the way the metrics are designed through quantitative analysis are designed in a way that provides a relatively, a relatively strong robustness in the sense that they don't change a lot from one questionnaire to the other when we do the full analysis. I hope I've answered the question.
And if I may add, just on how that can translate into business, it's a totally different example, but I'm sure we, we've all been faced with, you know, measuring the wrong output many, many times, actually, because, so the example I have in my mind is, is, you know, we used to measure output in our factories. And, and then the, and the capacity pressure, we, we realized one day that our team started to lose the cooking time in our factories, that in turn is deteriorating, if you want, the quality of the product. That we picked that through dissatisfaction from the breeders, that basically elevated that point. And so we had to totally change the, the metric, in fact, to modify, you know, the output on quality and food safety. So it don't happen. And it's, very often, there is a gap between intent and the reality of the outcome. And, and so you always need to check that back. You know, most of the time, everybody is very well-intended, but the reality of the, of matrix management is that sometimes you don't drive, the metric almost creates a different outcome or creates collateral damage to the outcome, and you need to sort of revisit some of that regularly. You have to have a continuous loop on, on checking whether your metric, metric measures the right outcome and whether your input measures, you know, is actually effective.
Yeah, that's a great example. Even the straightforward ones actually are so much more loaded than, than we might anticipate, right? And great, we have just a couple of minutes left, and I don't want to run over. So I just wanted to finish with a, with a final question about how going through these mapping exercises and understanding the ecosystem in more detail has changed the way that leaders operate in Royal Canin. Is there, can you, can you point to anything that this process has, has changed?
It's, it's, so, I mean, I, I started on this journey personally as a leader, you know, five years ago, actually, in a, in a meeting that I, I remember very well with Bruno Rocha in, in Singapore at the time. And we are here today. So, you know, it took five years of realization sensing of it. And I guess I, I got my direct team totally on board, probably in January of this year, of 2020. So, you know, it takes really real time. Now, what's beautiful now is with the, you know, because we did a lot of work in between, we had workshops, we had projects, we had initiative. Yassine is in, is known in the organization for, for, for quite a while now. And, and thanks to the, the EOM executive education at Oxford, I've actually sent, sent big cohorts of my leadership group to that, to that, to the, to that education program, which means that some of the vocabulary and the concepts started to diffuse in the organization. And now, I would say, now for the first time, I start seeing strategies that start from the pain point, that derives, you know, try to achieve an outcome and really are designing input on that basis. And this is the first year. So, you know, I would say, for me, it has been a five-year journey. I would say for the organization, 18 months to get there with, you know, two years of, of both education and, and sort of test project to, to make sure that people can noodle with this and really adapt their way of thinking. And we, and this is not everywhere yet, but you can, you really start seeing it crystallizing across the organization now. So I, I will, I will argue that today, with the work we've done, probably you can accelerate my five-year journey into a two-to-three-years journey to really embark a leadership team, an extended leadership in like top 100 or top 50 or into, into, into this way of thinking. Does that answer your question?
It definitely does, and it feels like a perfect note to wrap up on Loic and a point nicely towards tomorrow's theme, when we're set to talk about the leadership and education and challenge. So thank you for, thank you for sharing that. Heartfelt thanks to both of you for sharing so openly with us today. We're really lucky to have had you here with us. And thanks to everyone for your questions and your engagement. It's been such a pleasure. Have a great rest of your morning, afternoon, or evening, and hope to see some of you again tomorrow for the final day of the forum. Thank you.
All right. Bye-bye. Thank you very much.